I do.
Okay, I call tonight's meeting of the select board to order. And we are on Zoom, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do you have checks?
Yes.
I'm sure you do.
What was that Hong Depot for? Oh, I see. No, mine. I got it. I figured it out. Thank you.
Mm hmm.
These all put together. So.
How much of the Smith Road project this is cover?
That's the second invoice, so. Um, let me look at the. Eighty-two percent complete.
Okay.
Are you done with this?
I think um you need to look at it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here's the one receipt I was missing from July's.
From the credit card?
Credit card, yeah, reconciliation.
That's from the um town clerk training.
That's for the tax collector.
I agree. Lots of training, okay.
I think everyone else. You looked at all the other stuff. I was just missing that receipt on top, Eric.
Yeah, we saw it last week and I.
I do have August here though for you.
You missed.
Sign that on. I don't think you did. Did you?
No. Thank you.
Yes.
Maybe it's coding then. Right here, building manager wages. I didn't know we have a manager. And I'm not sure we.
That's from August, so we don't. That's not building manager. That's building um. That's the government building, so that's probably for the landscaping.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Mm hmm. Yeah, that's government building repair and maintenance.
Okay. I think of building, the municipal building.
Yes.
Okay.
But the landscaping just gets coded to government buildings. Maintenance, so that would be here, the fire station, the everything.
Okay.
It gets split between government buildings and cemetery.
Thank you.
We've been as fifty-six on shards.
The receipt's there.
Hmm.
The receipt would be there. That was prob- I think that's when I bought postage. The receipt's in there.
Oh, I didn't know that they sold stamps.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Good time. Yep.
At this one.
Yep.
All.
Meeting minutes from September second.
I read them.
I move that we approve the meeting minutes from September second.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Non-public number one from September second? Make a motion, I make a motion that we approve the non-public session number one minutes from September second? All in favor? Aye. That's all?
That is?
Okay. Okay, so we're all set to sign the documents for the Bean property when we receive a check? Can you send that amount out to? Yes, I sent it to him last week. Okay. How many signatures are required for that? Three. Okay, so at least two. It's cause I don't know if he wants to wait for another meeting? Or? At least two, yeah. Okay. I haven't heard back from him yet, so. Okay. And the record retention committee met last week, I believe it was? Was it, or the second? No, it was on the second. It was on the second. And we voted to proceed with disposing of the records. Transfer station storage, we had talked about getting one of those Rhino things? I don't think it's been installed yet. No, it's been ordered. He said his installation is like booked out to October, so. Okay. It's gonna be a little while. So probably end of October, or sometime in October? Yeah, he just said October. Okay. And we had a working session last week and we went over the revised revenue estimate for, um, twenty twenty-five. And were you able to submit the MS four thirty-four? Yes, it was, uh, I signed it, submitted it, and DRA has approved it. Okay, great. And then we also agreed to lock in heating fuel contract pricing, and I know I saw the contract, it needed one signature. So that's all set. Yep, all set. We got it back from C N Brown. We're good. Okay.
It was at two sixty-seven?
Two sixty-five-nine, I think. That sounds right. I'd have to check my notes to be sure. And we don't have any other DRA forms coming up? No, that's a typo. Okay, and? Funding is also a typo. Okay. So regarding committees, the building committee met just before this meeting, and it was very productive. I mean, we kind of, we summarized, um, some of the work that's been done, which is like the bathrooms, which look great. The boiler room door and the threshold have been done. Uh, the door still needs to be painted, and I believe Ron's going to do that. He may take the door off and paint it in his shop. Um, in terms of projects, we still have the drain by the police station door, um, and putting a grate over it. We have, um, there's a hole in the frame of the police station door. The roof over the kitchen door and the boiler door needs work. It's got shingles, and so there was talk. And all, all of these projects, we've got volunteers who are gonna work on them, and we have, I'll get to the workday that's planned. Um, so I think the latest plan is remove the two layers of shingles and fix how it's supported. And I know I went out and the supports probably need to be replaced. Um, and do a metal roof. Do you wanna elaborate?
Oh, it's good. It's all solid. There's no, there's no rock in it.
Yep.
But if we don't do it now, then we're gonna be in trouble, but. The plywood's all good, so, and the post, and they were just laminated too before us. We should put regular posts there.
Yeah.
Have them set on them cement things, you know, not have them, they're just stuck in the ground right now, and they're pretty rotted. And then up inside, they never put any, they never put any hangers up there, so they're just nailed.
What about that thing?
All the nails gonna be hanging there, so we're gonna put hangers up where the rafters are.
What about that roof over the A, AC that I see you guys tapping on?
Yeah, we gotta fix that. That's bad too.
Is that the one by the police?
Yeah, we're gonna take that off. When we get the metal out, we'll figure something out because that's.
Yeah.
No clean. It's pretty busted up.
Okay, so we've got, with that, that's proceeding, um. We also talked about the lights, and there are a couple of things, um, right here under the overhang. You'll get start, we don't leave the lights on all night, including in the little vestibule. But there are motion detector floodlights that you can just screw in, the light bulb, the light bulbs. So we're gonna get those and try that, so we don't have to get, because Jeanette's been trying to get an electrician for over a year. And they're just so busy, they don't have time. So I think that the floodlights with the motion detector in them will solve that problem. And the lights outside to replace that requires an electrician because it's a municipal building. But the committee, I thought it was really, um, creative, came up with a solution of getting solar powered lights that could be installed individually, you know, instead of replacing those. It wouldn't require any wiring. And the plan is to put one up out by the kitchen door, one on the corner and one on the side.
How do they, how do they, do they work good even on cloudy day?
Yes, they do.
Yes. Yep.
You gotta get a commercial, and you can't buy them.
Right.
Home Depot specials, you gotta have a good one to make the difference.
But I get to.
It works, yeah. If we can get electrician, it would be better to fix those out there, but if we can't, we can't.
Right. But at least we give light in the parking lot when people drive in. It would come on, it wouldn't be on all the time.
It'd be just like the lights that we have for the sign.
Yeah.
They won't go all night, but you know, they stay on for a while.
Um, the other thing we talked about were the windows and the cranks need to be replaced. So they're going to work on finding the right type of windows.
We fixed these two. All it was there was the set screws wasn't tight on them, so they didn't work. So what's gonna happen is we gotta open them and put, and put some, some lubricant to them, so they open and shut. We don't open and shut or not, yeah. So that's what's wrong with those two. Those two were all right. The one in there is, is all busted up. It's in the next room. That one's busted. So, and God knows, you can still get those. You can still get those cranks. There's, there's different. But I'm not sure what these windows were, cause there's no, there's not, no writing on them anywhere. Usually down on the corner, there's a writing on them.
Yeah.
You can usually tell what they are, but I'm not really sure what they are. They were there when I went to school. Well, that's what I'm saying. Hey, but you can still get, believe it or not, get the cranks for them, but.
We talked about placing at least the windows that open, but I think that's a project for another, another year.
Yeah.
If we could at least get the cranks done.
I would replace them in another year or something.
If you can get the, the numbers off them, if there's any, you can buy new sashes to put in there.
Yeah. Um, so those were kind of the easier things. The, the big thing is, um, power washing the building and the bricks, and then, um, tuck pointing. And so Jeanette's gonna check on a contractor due to the tuck pointing.
Worst part is this backside.
Yeah. It's where you do, replace, you fix the mortar in between the.
Oh.
Things. And apparently now there's a good mortar that's elastic and adhesive, so it really sticks, but you've gotta do it quickly, cause it dries quickly.
Put it in there now. You don't have much time to put it in. When you do, you want, you wanna be fast at it.
And so it's probably best to hire a contractor who.
Somebody knows what they're doing.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Um, but the power washing can be, would be done by volunteers. So we have, um, did I forget anything in our list?
No. Think that's about covered.
Okay, so we talked about workdays on Saturday, October fourth after on twelve-thirty, and on Saturday, October eleventh. Okay. So help would be appreciated. And these are the things we really wanna get done before the. So I think having a building committee has been really positive for the town. It's helped. You know, I look at the bathrooms, they're just so much nicer than they were.
Yeah.
And the new boiler door and, you know, lots of things are very good. Hey, Tom, do you have a report from the conservation commission?
Just that the next meeting's on the sixteenth, and there's supposed to be a, a Vermont real person coming.
Okay.
For a, uh, meeting. That's all I get for you today.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, the planning board? Let's see, we approved the, um, Keating subdivision. Keats. Keats subdivision, excuse me. And there was no other business, was there? There was. Yep, we talked about trying to get updated plans for under canvas. And mentioned that the ownership of that land had been changed to an LLC. And another, that was, that they call the business. Post-community agreement? Paul, do you wanna give an update on that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the only update would be, uh, surveys have been collected. Actually, Jeanette sent me a, a packet tonight. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet.
Sorry, second?
The surveys have been collected, um, so Jeanette sent me, scanned everything in, and sent it to me tonight, so I'll, uh, I'll pull that all together. Our next meeting is the twenty-second, uh, with the intent to go over that.
And there is an open house to get feedback on October fourth, fourth?
Correct.
Ten to noon? Yes.
Correct. Let's think about it.
Okay, um, I know they were preparing and delivering the material for the solar panels. Yes, um, I think they've gotten as far as they can get. We received an email that they're mostly complete with the installation. They're waiting on detail that will allow them to do the interconnection. They hope to be, um, complete with the entire project in about two weeks. Okay. And what did we find out about the, um, arm for the box to allow for, to upgrade it and to allow for a generator in the future? So just updating the electrical panel and the breakers is three thousand dollars. Um, doing that and installing a Kohler two hundred amp automatic transfer switch between the utility meter and the new panel, um, which prepares it for the generator, the future generator, uh, is forty-seven fifty-two. Four thousand seven hundred and fifty-two? Yes. Um, if we wanted them to do option one and option two, and provide a twenty kilowatt generator, including a generator, battery, trenching, conduit, startup, and commissioning for the whole basic setup, it's thirteen thousand nine hundred forty-one. For the total? For the generator and all of the work that needs to be done for it, including the panel and this transfer switch. And that was thirteen thousand? Thirteen nine forty-one. So basically fourteen K? Yep, if we wanted a bigger generator, a twenty-six kilowatt, um, it's just bigger. Mm-hmm. So roughly twenty-five more amps, um. He says all of the equipment in the shop plus some would be able to run on this generator. And if they needed to install more electrical appliances, you'd have the ability to do it without overstressing the smaller generator. So a twenty-six kilowatt generator would be fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars.
What size was the thirteen thousand?
Twenty kilowatt. That was almost fourteen thousand. And just to give an idea, um, and there's money in, there is money in the capital reserve fund for highway. It's usually used for a new truck. There's almost forty thousand dollars in there. I can keep my, or start searching and keep my eyes open for any possible grants that would help cover it because it is our secondary or backup emergency operations center, but I haven't seen anything so far. Yeah, grants would be helpful. Yes. Um, so the, the initial amount that you gave us, the three thousand for the upgrade, we don't have a choice on that. We need to do that. Yes. Because it just. That's for the electrical panel and the breakers. Yep. Okay, and so the question is, do we wanna spend forty-seven hundred now to just allow us to add a generator in the future? Or do we wanna actually get the generator?
I thought we voted on the transfer switch.
Uh, we did. We, we, we did to get a price and, and put that in. And so the question is, do we wanna do that, or do we wanna actually go forward with the generator?
So if we, with that included everything, Jeanette, if we went with a generator package?
Yeah, yes, the only thing that you have to keep in mind is they're not licensed to do propane. So the town would be responsible for hiring and paying a gas company to complete that portion of it. Do we wanna also get a vote from Cory's and Littleton that does generators? Uh, yeah, we can. I mean, I just, I asked these guys because they were there. And they would.
Highway department needs to run.
Yeah.
You know, because you don't know, I mean, it's, uh, pretty much the emergency center of storms or whatever.
You know what? The big thing I wanted to let you know, cause I do work for the town, and right now, if we have no power, it's very, very difficult to open up the doors to be able to get the equipment out of the garage.
Yeah.
I personally think we gotta go with the, uh, the bigger twenty-six kilowatt, set that up.
Yeah, cause that way if we need additional power in the future, we've got it. And, and I know that Jeff Shepherd used to work for a propane company. I don't know if his license is his or if it was the company's, but that.
That should be his.
It should, and if he, if he, his keeping it current, then, I mean, that may or may not take care of most of that work. But we still have to. Hooking up the propane. Propane tank installed and. Yeah. And all of that. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my only thing is, you know, should we go out for other bids, but we need to make a decision quickly because, you know, if we go with this company. need to make a decision quickly because, you know, if we go with this company, then we'd want the um switch done by that moment. No matter, we want the switch done no matter what, but. And I, I haven't priced out generators, so I don't know if these are good prices or not. I have.
I know they're right up there, and I think that sounds like a pretty good price, that twenty-six kilowatt.
And they're there doing the work and we get it done?
Yeah.
And we can use capital reserves if we need to.
We've got almost forty thousand in the highway capital reserve. And then in building reserve, which I'd have to look at the detail and what it could be used for. There's fifty-two thousand, so.
Because I don't remember if the building is all municipal buildings, if it's.
I don't know. I don't remember either. That's why I said I'd have to look at the detail, but.
Okay. Um. I make a motion that we move forward with installing a twenty-six kilowatt generator with the transfer switch with the company that's doing the work now.
A second.
And then we'll have to get the propane.
Yeah.
Done too. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. And this fits in with the hazard mitigation plan, because that was one of the recommendations that we needed to do to be prepared for emergencies. But that's one, one thing we can check off the list of to-dos. That's always nice. Okay, um. Smith Road? It's done, isn't it, except for the fence?
The fence, the fence is actually done. They did that last week. Um, they're supposed to do some paving, and I think that's it. I did, the gentleman from J McDonald had called me last week, and I asked him about those anchors and how they were installing the poles. Then he told me that they had already installed the fence, and I said, oh, well, we never gave you a response as to whether we were okay with your modified installation. And I asked him how they installed it, and he said that they drove the poles in instead of anchoring them on the brick. And I said, okay, what's the cost savings for that? And he said, um, he was trying to figure that out. He hadn't done it yet, but he said it would, it would easily be a few thousand dollars.
Oh, that's good.
So, um, okay. So. Yeah, it's pretty much done.
Good, good.
Yeah, and where it's just a single family down there, I think it's good, but if it was a multi-family track, it really being used a lot, I think they narrowed that a little. It's kind of narrow with that fence, it seems to me anyways. It's just my opinion on it, but it does look good.
Well, it's been quite a bit of money as it is, and, you know, maybe it's a one-way road.
Yeah.
You know.
Well, it's only one, like I said, it's only one house.
Right.
You know.
Um, and the FEMA funding? I know we.
We received money last week, almost seventy thousand dollars on harem and union. Um, I'm waiting on additional information on where stone was placed, where grading was done, so on and so forth, so that I could submit additional invoice information to FEMA to get additional money for work that has been done this summer. Um, because any road that was damaged, that had to receive a top coating qualifies. If it was in the damage report for FEMA, then it qualifies for reimbursement, so I'm waiting on information from Adam so that I can submit that to FEMA. Um, I looked this afternoon at the grants portal and the other three projects don't have any new status from what they had last week. So I have my weekly update with them tomorrow. Maybe something will change by then, but we'll see. Um, in order to get reimbursed for stuff that wasn't in our initial request, there, I have to send copies of invoices and um check stubs. So we cut checks. In the checks that we cut today, there's materials, stone and stuff like that. I just need to, again, get the information from Adam, confirmation on where it was installed, where it was placed, and when, so that we can get reimbursed for those.
Okay.
Including Smith Road once that is obligated through FEMA. It's not been obligated yet.
And we have a public hearing for accepting um unanticipated revenue in two weeks, correct?
Yes, two weeks from tonight.
So that's seventy K. We've got it in our bank, but we can't formally accept it until we have a public hearing. And so the mitigation work is continuing, and that's what you're looking at documenting and documenting, tying the invoices to the actual work, so.
Well, it's repair work and mitigation work. I'm hoping. I haven't gotten a status on mitigation work that's been done yet.
Okay.
So.
How they doing on their headwalls?
I, I asked Adam if they arrived. He said they hadn't arrived, so I asked him to check into it, and he said he would, so.
I know they worked on like Forest Lake Road. They were grading it again last week, and I'm thinking that wasn't one of the priorities.
Yeah.
But Adam will be here at their working session to go over the budget, right?
He should be here next Monday. Yep.
Do we have any other new business or any other updates?
No, we did get the annual um order form for RSA books.
Oh, that's right, I did see that.
For twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. So I, I don't know.
We should, because those are.
I don't, I don't need one.
Yeah.
When I need an RSA, I search for it online because I get it like that. I'm sure that you guys probably use the book in here for the planning board.
Sometimes, and I know, like, I've seen Emily with hers.
Yeah, but I, I don't think I've cracked the plastic off mine. I just, it's so much faster to find exactly what I need online.
For planning, sometimes it's helpful to look through the sections.
Well, yeah, and you guys are in here looking at it together, so.
So I'm looking to the two other planning board members. Should we get a couple updated ones?
Do we need new ones? I mean, how?
Well, the RSAs do sometimes change.
And they did do a lot of, um, there was a lot of zoning legislation. I think a lot of it didn't pass. They tried to take, the legislation was trying to take control away from municipalities, and a lot of that failed, but I think we should have at least some copies, but I'm not sure everybody needs a new copy.
Yeah.
I, I don't need them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go online. I do like to have the, to be able to go through the paper one, because actually I find their search, at, at least for the planning thing, is not very good online. Um, but, um, I, I don't want another book. I can.
So should we have, get maybe one or two copies for this room?
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
I think two copies is.
Two copies and then two people we were looking, okay.
So just two book only?
Yep.
Are you gonna make a motion for that?
I make a motion that we authorize a purchase of two of the um planning board, planning-related RSA books, um, two copies books only for the planning board.
Okay.
All in favor?
Alright.
Aye. Any other updates or miscellaneous things?
No.
We did have a couple of, um, claims that came in, um. So we had a, an email we received today from David Spreadberry regarding, um, you know, he discussed last week about fill going to Whitefield. Um, and did you have a chance to talk with Adam about that?
I had mentioned it to Adam, and Adam had basically said the reason why it went to a resident in Whitefield is because it was right there at the Dalton Whitefield line, and it would have taken more time and more fuel to bring it all the way back into Dalton and even take it to like the highway yard. And he said that the fill that's being taken out of these ditches is not fill that's useful for the town. And so it's, it's more of a hindrance than a help to keep it, and he said that he was not confronted by David Spreadberry asking for the fill until David was screaming about it, so. That's kind of the Reader's Digest version of what I got, so.
Okay, so it's not obvious that it would be helpful for any Dalton residents for them to get it.
He's saving, I don't know how many miles.
Yeah, and that's basically what he's saying, and it's like eight miles one way from where they were ditching back to the highway garage of, as opposed to.
Doesn't make sense.
Going to the house in Whitefield, which was right there. You know, he's like, it was like a mile or two miles or something, and he's like, it didn't, it didn't make sense to spend the time, the fuel, the wear and tear on the trucks, and he said that that's, you know, si- I think since then, another Dalton resident on that side of town has said, yeah, I'll take some. So Adam's like, great. You know, he's like, if someone asks me and I have it and they want it, I give it to them, but if you don't ask me, I don't know that you could use it, so it goes to whoever asked for it.
Yeah.
If it's feasible, if it's close. So that was pretty much what I got.
Okay, so based on, you know, this follow-up to that meeting where he was pretty adamant that he was not happy last, at our last meeting, I think we should respond to him and basically say it was closer for the highway department and, um, if there's somebody close in Dalton, talk to Adam and make arrangements. I mean, I think if it's way out of the way, then.
Just saving money with the mileage you just got doesn't say anything makes sense.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying that too, that, you know, that we need, we should look out for our residents if they want some. You know, if it's a mile or two more, then, you know, we, I think they could, and I think that will work with most people if they ask.
If they ask.
So.
How do I wanna say this? In a nice way?
Well, if they ask.
Be yelled that?
Right.
I mean, that, that's the hard part is.
Oh, scream to somebody. Really don't, yeah, they really don't fly.
You know, I mean, like last meeting, if, if it been a much better interaction, if there's been a different demeanor, so. Do you wanna draft a response on the behalf of the select board, or do you want me to, or?
I can.
Okay.
He might wanna hear directly from the select board, though. I mean, because at the meeting, he said he wasn't talking to me. He was talking to the select board, so it might be better coming from a member of the select board as opposed to me, even though it would be the same message.
We, you want me to draft something?
You can draft it. I'll send it. I don't care.
Okay.
Yeah, if you draft it, we get to look at it.
Okay, so we can't do things outside of a meeting?
Right, right.
So then we would have to wait until Monday when we have a working session.
Yeah.
Respond.
I mean, it could just be something as simple as the road agent made the decision that was in the best interest of the town to take the fill to someone who asked for it and was nearby. I mean, I, I I don't think any answer's gonna be a great answer. It's not gonna be received well, so I, I, I don't really, not really sure.
I can try to draft something while we're meeting, but if we wanna just get it done tonight. I think it just seems like it'd be better to do it tonight, not put it off.
Mm-hmm.
Just to try to get emotions down. So maybe when we finish everything, I'll try to draft something before we adjourn. Remind me. Don't let me forget.
Do they have a good stat on that? I liked how she started that.
I did too.
I mean.
Yeah, I could do it right now if we wanna take a couple minutes. The road agent made the decision, um.
For the best interests of the town.
Yep.
I mean, he may not agree with that statement, but that's why the road agent is elected into that position, to make those decisions.
How about the elected road agent?
In the future, if, if he's close enough and if you ask him, he will probably accommodate you.
Yeah, if you're, if you're looking for material and it is feasible and in the best interest of the town, please contact Adam. I mean.
It's too wordy, but. This needs work, but. Well, the elected road agent made the decision for the best interests of the town. The Whitefield location was substantially closer to where the fill was generated from ditching, thus eliminating additional mileage. If Dalton, if any Dalton resident would like fill, they may ask the road agent if it's feasible to get some.
Yeah, sounds good.
That sounds easy enough.
Is that all right? Okay. Do you want me to send it to you in an email, and you can send it out?
Sure.
Okay.
I can just send it or?
Yeah, you wanna just, can you read my writing?
Send it to you.
That's what I thought. Yep, okay. And if I send it in email, you can always copy and paste it into the emails. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, we had another um email from, um, regarding with the, the last meeting from Pam Catherine. And I'm honestly not sure what she was talking about, because what, what she was alleging in the thing, I actually, for the first time, went back and listened to her recording, and I didn't see what she was alleging, so. Um, I don't know how we wanna respond or if we need to respond. I mean, I think she was just providing comments, and I think we can.
I haven't read it yet, so I don't.
You know, it came Tuesday. Bring it out. I've got something there. Did you see it, Tom?
Yeah, I did.
I'm not sure that we need to take any action. Other thoughts? Okay. Um. The only other thing is, I know we've had some conversations with the attorney. We're gonna have a meeting um by Zoom. Can we do that meeting by Zoom?
Well, could yeah, yes.
That makes it difficult. I can fit it into things if I can just do it from home rather than.
Needs to be together. And I'm, I'm open. The time-wise doesn't matter for me.
Yeah, we could, we could, we could do it that way. I mean, that's cheaper than having him, you know, drive up here. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what date do you wanna?
So the options I think were, I think, and I had said based on.
I think you had.
Zoom, what I could do, which.
I think you said twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, if it's at three.
The twenty-fourth, it would have to be at three. I'd be pushing it forward. The twenty-fifth would be better.
Okay.
I could do it. Do we wanna do it like at three or how about four?
One, okay.
Okay. Or bought by Zoom.
Are you going to respond to it, or do you want me to?
I can respond.
Good.
Okay. Is that it for new business and updates?
That's it, and, uh, I do not have none in public.
Okay.
Just from the last meeting, I did not erase it.
We have any public comments? Okay. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Uh, oh, you did it already, never mind.
The, uh-
Yes, I'm like, wait, you have to do the thing.
Yeah, no, and I'll, I'll type it up, so. Um.
Do we have to make a motion to send it out? Does, does it matter?
I think we just agreed to respond. I think, I think we're fine. I don't think it needs a motion. I mean, if anybody opposes it, oh, okay, it's consensus. I think that's fine. Okay, so I made a motion to adjourn.
Awesome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's what.
Seven forty-one.
Thank you, everybody. It was a nice short meeting.
Good job.
I wasn't, I wasn't expecting it to be that short. Good night.
And I'm gonna, just so I get it done, I'm gonna-